Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to Can Bear Ops Committee at the Home Meeting. Before we get started, just a, I guess, a note. Well, Committee at the Home Meetings have always been open to the public to attend in person. This is the first time that they've been broadcast on our YouTube channel. So, for those at home watching, on stormy night, I guess that's why you didn't make it here in person because of the weather. We're glad to see you. The reason for the movement, as it is supposed to be, is to be as open and transparent for the citizens of Bear Ops as possible. So, we welcome you for joining us. And with that said, we're going to get started. So, we'll start with the agenda. And I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Council Frady, Secretary Mike, Deputy Mayor Kirley, all those in favor of the agenda. Eric. We move on to the minutes of October the 7th. Need a motion to adopt the minutes. Council Dearing sent in a by, Council Pettin. And we'll start with page one. That, page two. In the apartments. Questions, commissions, administration finance. Page three. I need development, technical services. Public recreation. Page four, public works engineering. Page five, more public works. Questions or missions? Now, we, Eric, Council Mary.
Do we secure or lower?
Yes, good to know.
Yes, sir.
And, all good, page five? Page six. All those in favor of the minutes? Motion, Eric. All right, we'll move on to administration finance. Deputy Mayor Kirley and CAO. I think Deputy Mayor Kirley is going to take this one.
Thank you, your worship, your good councillors. The force delivered here is being requested from Central United Church to pay it for $150. The donation is for the memorial dedication service at Central United. It's a hundred and ten former occupants who voluntarily paid school sacrifice. We want more ones. So, the recommendation is, we have resolved, now we're almost to make $150 to Central United Church for the memorial dedication service to 110 former occupants. They have the funds to be available, we can count six zero eight five dash seven thousand.
Okay, can we have a motion please?
We have a motion.
This is, this is, this is, we have a motion. So, we'll go around the table, Council Frady. Council Pettin.
Yes.
I forgot to mention, those who may be watching, Council Memphis joining us on Zoom tonight. Council Dearing.
I think we're through.
Council Kirley, Deputy Mayor Kirley. Council Mary.
All good, the fog.
Council Beckard. And certain ad motion, whoever, whatsoever. This kind of thing is, this kind of thing will memorial dedication service. And so, yeah. All of the here. All right, moving on.
Our next order of business is approval for travel to the M&amp;L Conference Trade Show. We will give from November 28th to 27th for travel to the and we're asking for the cost of $22,000. We're going to spend the account six zero eight five dash seven thousand.
Okay, it's pretty straightforward. Council Beckard. Grabbing the sun. All good. Council Mary. Deputy. Good. Council Dearing. Council Pettin, all good?
Good.
All right, no discussion there.
We'll forward the report.
All right, next up we've got the Department of Justice and Public Safety. Recognition contributions. So, I'll turn this over to Deputy Mayor Kirley.
I just want to table the letter here to Lieutenant Bay Roberts on behalf of the Department of Justice and Public Safety. Please to provide $26,000 in recognition of your contribution to fighting wildfires in Kingston, Holyrood, Paddy's Pond, and Martin Lake this past summer. This represents $15,500 for each of our one-time honorary to our 30 volunteer firefighters here in Bay Roberts. A $10,000 one-time honorary for your local fire department. And $1,000 for administrative support and assistance distribution of the honoraries. And that's from Karen Stone, Deputy Minister, Deputy Attorney General.
Okay, so that's just straightforward information purposes. An acknowledgement by the provincial government and the appropriate Department of Justice and Public Safety for the contributions that volunteer firefighters made this summer in combating these fires. Of course, close to us on the North Shore. And our own Bay Roberts Fire Rescue Department was heavily involved in that. And a couple of our councillors here were involved in it as well. And I know Council Dearing, Council Frady, Council Beckard. Sorry, that. We're members of Bay Roberts Fire Rescue and they actually, they were down here and did some shifts. And I know as well, Council Dearing, search and rescue are getting the same sort of funding correct. And of course, you were involved with it. So, on behalf of the town, hats off to your organizations and the great work they do. And it's good to see the government acknowledge you. So.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say about that?
No, I think we're definitely to applaud our brothers and sisters. There a couple of weeks ago, I think you heard the chief say, I think, just over 2,500 hours, our apartment punched in here. Started laughing beginning, just, you know, giving the shift, you know, in the morning till the night. Then we started doing 24-hour shifts, basically. Truck just stayed down there, proves it would stop it. So, it was, it was well appreciated. A lot of people, a lot of hours down here. It was, it wasn't a good time, but, you know, it's good to see that all of our research and research and support departments that the government appreciates comes out of this. Nobody went down there expecting this. Nobody went down there and asked for this. But it is definitely appreciated by all.
Excellent. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I think as citizens in the town of Bay Roberts, we're always grateful that when we apply for insurance, that we can say we have a fire department in our town and we're so appreciative. It's probably unfortunate it took such a situation to have an honorary. It's certainly not much pay, but it's certainly an acknowledgement of the efforts of our volunteer firefighters.
Council Mary, anything from the search and rescue events?
Yep, well, just to add to all that, for us fellows, where there's no budget, for us, don't tell them, you know, say, here, your money for the year. Fund raises for everything. For us, it's a big, big, especially when you get to $10,000. And the money that comes in, because we don't get a lot of area or whatever, whatever. Whatever we do, we do, get our own pockets and get reimbursed for expenses. So, it was all good.
Okay, are we doing it? Anyone else want to speak? No, all good? Okay. Deputy Mayor Kirley, you've got one final agenda, administration finance.
I have a final letter to table for the Royal Canadian Indian Branch 32. As they launched their POPi campaign, they're reaching out to ask for continued support. And this year's campaign is just as important, if not more so, than in years past, as it plays a vital role in promoting peace, preserving the traditional reverence, and raising much-needed funds to support veterans and families in times of need. So, taking that letter there for their request for a donation to their drive.
Okay, and I don't think this one is going to be debated at all. Certainly, this is something that the town is involved in every year. So, we got consensus on this, does everyone agree?
Yeah, we all agree.
I don't think their court probably got the amount.
Yes, it was a hundred dollars.
What did I wrong? Okay. Okay, that brings us to an end for administration of finance. Now, we'll go to planning and development. Technical services. So, this is Council Pettin? No, that's not updated, that's right. Yeah, Council Beckard. And, yes, the technical services.
From it all.
Technical services, Council Pettin, yeah. So, it's really two different ones, right? So, we'll start with, I guess, technical services. I'll land over to Director's Wires. And Council Beckard has to go on the other end of the list.
Yeah, we got another one saying, this first one here is a safety concern at Millwall Road. Great confusion, and I got a few things I'd like to say, because I just speak to some people from our campaign in that area. So, I'd be willing.
Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, I, I miss it at the intersection. And it seems to be one free for all in here. There's no structure to the intersection whatsoever. I think the three-way stop would solve that issue. But again, we'll get public works handled then as well. And see what can do with the road.
So, what can you say to me? I'm pretty sure, we have a three-way stop in here. I know those are your questions.
Everybody kicked up, right up.
When I was here again campaigning, I talked to several, several residents. I observed, would be, I think, not only, I would certainly go ahead and go back with the three-way stop. But there needs to be some direction, as in lines on the road. There's, I don't know the name of the road, but White Shade Road. That was just right on top of the road. We're stopped by that shade.
But there's only stops on the three-way.
Yeah, but in my view, that needs to be moved out further. A little bit of rearrangement stuff. But it is, it is very unsafe from my observation. So.
Smoke up.
Yeah, we look, yeah, so, again, we did have a three-way stop there. Actually, I don't know, it was almost like a four-way stop. Because you, when you come across the bridge, you had to stop. Then you come out of, say, Holmes Valley Hole.
That's Northside Road.
Northside Road, you had to stop. You got Holmes Road, had to stop somewhere. You also had Beckard's. We had to stop somewhere.
And that's Earl's.
Oh, it was Earl's, isn't it?
Holmes Road is really not even part of the intersection.
No, but it's, it's in there.
So, yeah, you're right.
So, but, we got, it's, you know, it's probably the most complaints we've ever got a better three-way stop. Sometimes you gotta change streets. However, I was going to suggest the same thing you suggested. The main way of traffic, when you come across the bridge, you go Northside Road. That is the flow. Yes, that is the main flow. Not, not Earl's, not Holmes. It's across the bridge. You're just, it's just a sharp right-hand curve. Made in that area. A line, a line should be painted, like a middle line, to show that this is the flow of traffic. And copper stop lines painted at Earl's and Holmes.
The big problem with that whole intersection piece, there's no set definition.
No.
It needs to be.
Like a, like a, nor intersection, like, that would be a thing. That would be a T-shaped intersection. But it's not. So, that, that's the big problem with the confusion. Because on here, when you put the three-way stops on there, the road has no definition. So, no matter if you do a three-way or leave alone, it's still like there because of that lack of definition.
So, a three-way stop is not really the solution, is it?
It would be if the road had definition. The only way to make definition, there was a couple ways, you could spend a few dollars. We could, we could paint something here.
That'd be the easiest and cheapest option. Also, like, when two years ago, when I brought up about the speed bumps for Goose Pond Road for the park, I also envisioned on the bottom of Goose Pond Road, having one there when the parents first turned on. So, that's something we can revisit next year. That's it. Now, we also had the post office boxes. We, in the past, we never had the post office boxes. So, that's a very busy area, you share some post office boxes. So, we may have to look at some, maybe speed bump in that area as well.
Oh, sorry.
Then, this, this, you know.
Is, is there any way we could do something, if you're done online, you follow the road signs? Is there any way we can get it, or should we ask for a consensus from others? You don't want, I say, or should we just go ahead and?
Well, we'll come back to that later. So, anyone else have a comment? Any other, the only other three councillors here?
We've talked about this before. I think, we got a council, we went in, put up stop signs, we put them there everywhere. And they weren't up a week, and everybody's calling complaints, and stop signs in the wrong place. You can't get out, you're out of the road before you see.
We gotta do something.
I don't think the three-way stops is going to work unless we, unless we make roads.
Relining here would be hard, because there's a lift station here, right, Chuck? There's a lift station right next to the bridge, isn't there? So, any realignment is going to be hard also with the road. So, we can't really look at that.
Council Pettin?
Yes.
You have, you have any offer on it or?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Don't know what you can do in there.
Council Mary?
You have to put curving.
You need, you give a definition.
Yep. Other than that, you're, you've got some kind of arms there, but people have to follow the road and curve.
Is there, is there any barriers in doing, having a great look at some kind of line painting for the immediate as we reconsider something in the future?
So, to bring that to us.
My suggestion, because, again, this for Greg, maybe just take a look at this now, and no intersection. And I'm sure there's professionals out there that could give a hand with this and say, what are your suggestions? Clean this up. Because there's a whole slew of things there. The mailboxes out here, the lift stations there. It's, it's a strange layout. Me, you need, honestly, a professional to look at this on the outside and say, here's what you need to do with this intersection.
You need to get a, the issue is the stop is such a big area. I'm going to put the stop signs, if you don't mind, because other than this. The road, Beckard's Road, had to come all the way out, so you had the stop sign there. They're all cutting on the inside. People are cutting on the outside. It's such a big area, that intersection is just wide open. It needs to be defined. And the only way to really define it is, as Council Boyne said, new inch, is curb. And, and, you know, line painting, we're working it, like I said, I think you can look at that, but ultimately, to me.
That's only as good to the last.
Yeah. Curb, to fix it properly, and if you want to control it, you gotta put a curb to keep the vehicles on the road.
You're almost going to lose some of the pavement.
Because what you guys done last time was perfect. I thought it was the right idea, it's just that people could drive.
There's too much pavement.
Yeah. Right? And that would be my point of view, is to get them to hit the other. If you really want to fix it.
I think, I think there's a lot of options, but I think we need consulting, a consulting. I want to look at it and move right.
Correct. So, I think using as bus stop terms, you sound, so they select it for the mailboxes. So, a lot of them, a lot of people stop.
I think the bus stop is for, for Goose Pond Hill. But you'd work around that, I mean, use an asset history for it.
Yeah, I was just saying, that's, we're, we're general.
Obviously, need response to our question. What I think we need to do. So, yeah, but we, we've seen, we changed it. We took a, there was a lot of that, and we put it back, and then we're back to the same old game. So, I think time has come now to take someone from the outside to look at it in a professional manner and say, yes, we need to fix that.
So, if we're all okay with it, we'll give Director Squires directions to pursue that. Sound good?
I'll, I'll do it in a month.
Okay.
Yeah, next we got the Bay Roberts primary. There's been some current concerns about vehicles up there. And again, Greg must have dropped in. I'm certainly even, for, for.
Yeah, so we received complaints from multiple residents of Haddon Place. But you gotta know, speeding, something, noise coming from, like, his kids at the Bay Roberts primary. I forwarded along to the RCP. Away and responding still. And I happened to talk to them that they're willing to meet the council.
So, this came in after our last paid hold me. So, you sent me a lot of residents, so I forward this to you. But, Council Dearing, you had some knowledge on this, didn't you?
Uh, yes.
The census, I thought this was addressed.
So, the RCP did, I guess, raise some ticks over there, they spent some time there. And it did slack off, but lately, they haven't been around, and it's all back again. So, some of the residents stepped back onto the property, watched the kids over there, they got trucks dragging around. They got trucks full of kids. I would say kids, young adults, racing around, all non-see, I think, not committed by the truck. But it's, it's bad, really bad. So, now this resident, is a new resident in Haddon, in Haddon Place. And she just wanted to come meet with the council.
Yeah, pardon me, you say she wants to come to meet with the council?
I thought there was never a symbol of that.
She didn't say, you want to have, you had to put in a, oh, no, that was what you told her.
That was what you said.
Yeah, I told her she wanted to attend, that was her last.
Oh, no, but she didn't ask for a process to address the concern, so.
So, so the options are, I guess, to address this RCP again, Greg can look after that. I'm going to say this, and I've said it before, that as a councillor, you should probably be reaching out to the school district.
I thought that would do. I thought they, they said they were.
Did they answer?
They were about to defend the gate guard, so they said that they were going to look at all the gates now.
Okay, you mean, we're done? District or at school level? Okay, you need to go, to me, you need to go above that.
We'll take your question.
You need, you need to go to district, haven't you?
Yeah. I mean, those are questions. Just, for those familiar, which everyone there is, they are primarily built a race track around the school. Right? I mean, I've been, I've been to schools like that in different parts of the yard. And I've seen speed bumps put on, drive, you know. And one of my daughters apparently from one, they got, it's a small one-way, one-way lane. They put speed bumps there, but they're almost in the middle of the road, actually, larger, you, you, the larger trucks would actually straddle it. Like, I mean, it's like, you know, big trucks, not pickup trucks, but, you know, regular vehicles, like, you gotta slow down the traffic, you know, and the police in there, so.
Anyone else want to weigh in on this?
This has been an issue that's been ongoing. We have a resident in here. I talked to the council.
Last year, year before.
A year before, and I have residents after somewhere, who have been moving out for this reason. She came here, bought a beautiful home, and talked to, in a nice neighborhood. And she said she just couldn't put up with no more. So, it's, it's something that's been done, and addressed the council numerous times. And we keep saying the same thing, but it's, it's at our CFP, I mean, so.
So, I, I don't know what other options we have. We can't police that apartment.
But it's, it's not even our property. That's the problem we got.
And the RCP, we can keep asking them, or I think we need to go to the owner of the facility, which is NLESD. And I think Director Squires will just give us some contact information. All right. It's their ability, they need to cure. After hours.
They probably want to protect their company too.
I, I don't think so. So, we'll try that, and I guess if no one else got anything to say about it, we can move on. And Director Squires needs an update on these conversations that take place with the district.
It's going to be a work in progress, for sure. And it's seemingly, taking some.
It's only to defer the vehicles in here, because we have the same problem just right here on top of this hill. With vehicles hanging out in the night time, music going, and there's a couple of residents there. And we put concrete blocks up there and blacked them off. And after a while, they get it or they have it going, they're looking back, the blocks have not seen them no more. So, it's just a matter of getting them in there to have it and go somewhere else.
I think one point of discussion probably for Greg, as Council Frady noted, speed bumps correctly placed in, in spots on that could deter a lot of the activity.
Very, so some kids up there, some of the, the, the.
You know, I think it needs to be secured.
That'd be, there is no other way, we shouldn't abandon as a council, to fall out of the gate, or gates. See it?
Okay, we look forward to the update. Yeah?
We've got some cleanup orders, and again, Greg, it'll be doing a lot of that back and forth. Update 26, 28.
So, this, this, I guess, come back to the next week for motion, but I guess there's an update that 26 public over road was delivered in an order deadline dated May 27th. Nothing has been done. Therefore, town's next step will be forward, file to a lawyer in the same court to be followed. And court ordered cleanup. 28 public over road was ordered to clean up as well. Deadline, October 27th. It's passed, have no efforts for the property owner. The owner has 14 days to clean up. And 14 days to appeal the order after 14 days. Again, we need the exact same step as the previous one. Forward to a lawyer to forward to court.
So, at this point, Greg, you need any direction from us here?
I think you do, don't you?
Or consensus for you?
I guess, right now, the consensus, but next week, I guess, it will come back just to our motion to forward to court. Hopefully, I mean, they don't meet their deadline.
And if this, if we agree to go to court with this, what are the consequences?
So, they can be fined, and the court will actually, court will legally order that to clean up as well.
And then if they fail to do it, then you're in contempt of court. And that's a whole different issue. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions on that?
I think it's time to pump these two to rest.
Give us a, yeah, there's a few more around, I'd like to, hey?
This, those probably have been on the go for a while, but.
We've been talking to those for years.
Yep. Okay.
Next, we got a, this, we've got a reperiment. So, we want to scroll down, if you want to have a look, and any questions, Tom? They can surely, I'm saying, Greg, because he's getting, he's spoiled all day long. He's interesting, he's a good decision to make.
Greg, this is fourth quarter. I don't know where it is. Look at where it is, before here, it's okay.
This is just an update, bro. I gave one for third quarter, so this is fourth, till third.
I'm going to say, it is not till fourth quarter, it is only. Probably bumped into it.
Okay.
Move that. So, the next one, that was 245 years down the road. Property concerned here with flooding. Again, Greg must have posted on his blog.
Yep, this one is, because we had some complaints, the water diversion due to the building ditch, but I think since that was a property owner. And I had to reassure him later today that hopefully the ditch will be reinstated. And if not, we're going to have to take this action and order for the ditch to be reinstated.
Okay, so the two parts of this, the ditch, he's giving you assurances that he's going to reinstate it. Just have to make sure it gets done in the near future, not too far. And what about the cleanup?
Uh, cleanup is, I don't know if anyone else has seen it. But it's coming along quite well. A lot of stuff got trumped over here today, and I'll be with.
Okay. All right, so let's move forward to me.
We'll move with that. Next one is a fire service request in pass, power, designated area for the town, pass power. Mission value, I'll say it that way.
So, we had, I guess, a request from a resident that she wanted to build two air DMDs at the, I guess, the first cabin going in, so it's approximately a half kilometer fast to the end of the daylight. And she had requested that environment department provide her protection. So, in our operating policy, it actually says that it ends at the end of the payment on the country road. Or country, county, or whatever, however. But resident, I'm going to say, camp before.
Okay, we'll move to the second for discussion.
Well, I just had seven, so. It's a major, I'm probably going to hear a bit of knowledge. Or I thought, but, so they are, the reason of the, the reason, the reason the policy came about, that pavement, the protection would stop at the end of the payment, because it was, had been for a few years ago, fire department gave, insurance company gave that fire department, say, we took too long to get in. We basically had to say, hold up. You're not even in our service. You're lucky that trucks coming. So, then the policy came in, I'm worried that protection stops. This, if something happens, depending on what it is, a wildfire, a, 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 a fire can start moving away. So, you gotta take into this certain consideration. Biggest consideration with that area is the condition of the road. Roads aren't maintained. Especially in the winter, they're not maintained for, you know, regular traffic. They're not plowed or anything like that. If you look at them and you charge them and they're meant, because they have to pay, they're not getting fire protection for free. But you should charge it. You are now guaranteed that regardless, that fire truck is going in over that road. A non-maintained, non-tailled road. So, someone has to take the responsibility. If we take that, like, you know, I don't recommend, and we should start going into on-service areas without fire protection. We got trucks down there that cost six, seven hundred thousand dollars, sending them over their road. And the main purpose is protection, the residents, the taxpayer residents, the town, they don't, it's hard to play. So, if the trucks can't get in there, it's happening for now great liability, which is how the policy came about, in the first place, because of the liability issue. So, that's my biggest concern, we don't service that area, the road is not maintained. If, you know, if someone could there and do, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it. Road hasn't been maintained for us to get in here. Road hasn't been acceptable condition, just send our trucks, you know. You don't have, you don't have, you don't have the funds, you don't have any funds to buy again.
Okay.
Everyone's been at this, because it's something for that.
Uh, I'm with, uh, Council Franny, uh. I think if something happens in there, I'm sure we would help, but say that we're going to, uh, on a regular basis, have cloud of all, we've rolled up the date.
That's a bet.
Yes, I think, anyway, because, uh, I don't see it. All beyond the, the laws, the law, you have to, for everyone in there, for everyone, it wouldn't be no end to it.
Have you heard any comments?
I agree, too, with the road, because, uh, Council Franny described, uh, against these extensionist, at this point.
Same.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we spent great time, maybe this, here's not, we're not really policy self, or have you got, we have, we have, it's on the service.
I think, I think, you realize, when people decide, if land is not like, you know, the social, when you with the county system, you got the exact right here. I think when people decide, living outside service areas, they got to realize that the service is out here. That's why you don't come to the city.
Okay. All right, I think you have one left here, Council Rebecca.
Water, water drive, there's a land issue here. Pregnant takeover, because he knows the soil inside of it. It was limited access to the property. We had infrastructure on that property.
Great.
Yeah, he had, I guess, two applications to enter to residential units, on the drive. Uh, I think it's just, like, drawn down to the person's property. And, uh, now with surveys and the findings, turns out that the road and town legislation is actually paved over, and, uh, the person's property, they'll use it. So what I'm looking for, I guess, is direction, um, where to go.
It's a good question. What pictures here?
Sure.
Why didn't this, before the, since the question, for, for, things, why did you? Well, again, it's, uh, it's a, not.
So, we have a lift station on property that that, yes, is up there. And it's preventing this person from accessing the property.
Yeah, so it's parked on, I guess, uh, here, because I drove that road. Person's property boundary is pretty much being a payment. And with the symbol, that, that road, or the thing. Road.
Well, it, it sounds to me, and I guess somebody just don't refer to legal. See, I don't think.
Those chairs, Greg, in the picture. So that's created by a homeowner. It's not a roadway or a road. It goes into that vacant land, showing us on the field right there.
Yep, so the, uh, in that, there, survey, there is roadway going to both that piece of property. But the roadway is not, I guess, very wide. Now, they may be able to take to the roadway, but, and the road is there, so.
So the road is probably not given, because it's just a dead road anyway. But the lift station is the real issue, not, not so much, like, if you took up the pavement, just said, here's this, this private land belongs to you. That's it. Lift station, we just can't move.
So we got to, then, the road not access to the station.
Well, you just, you need it easily, but.
What these, the air kids are ready. So.
How, when was that lift station put in? When, who's on the chat? When?
I would say sixty-seven.
Back that far?
Yeah. That's what I think originally.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So it's a different person owns the land. This person built the house. He wants to test it, he'll get it.
I guess what also land, the fact that we have infrastructure and someone has a property. We should have these. And set up a meeting, to see if we can, uh, we can work out some, uh, agreement, you know, that's you know, we gotta be able to name where that's based. We gotta know the.
Everybody in peace, but yes.
So I guess we'll just defer that to our actualists. And, uh, Greg will have notified the person that wants to build there. As of now, there's nothing we can do, to go on the land. Certainly, they can divert their driveway to another area of potential. Which is mostly difficult, but we got a bigger issue here. We have to figure out our own plan, to take it first.
That's the first step, before you go get anything else.
Would you, would you, anything, I mean, sixty-seven is long, it was last time, at least, went up, so.
It might have been seventy, I.
But, but what I'm trying to say is, uh, one, like, what's the chances that there's some kind of agreement from back then, that, from a property owner, the saying that, yes, you can put this here, and...
Might be somewhere, but I'm gonna check on my water sewer drawn, to see if, if somebody old drunk got surveys on it, because looking at that survey, it shows that there's a roadway there, but where's our lift station, like, we don't know where our lift station is to, with that.
They would have put a lift station whenever they did or paid the road. And we would have hoped that they would have went and checked surveys before they went to payment.
Yeah.
That road was also there, when they paid, and that road was.
Yeah, yeah, we did a, we did an upgrade, we upgraded the lift station a couple of years back, because that was one of the ones that were project. And we extended probably fifteen or twenty thousand, and we changed, like, that, that up to stop, right?
The days don't look too lost, though.
I probably paid, we paid it, we did as well, I can't remember, but.
Okay.
I'll dig into it some more from my aspect as, as well, to try that.
Okay, so we've got direction on that. Uh, next we have, that's on Melbourne Tourism Enhancement, which is, Council Franny and Director Delaney, there's nothing here, but did you say you had some?
Well, I, I partially, I was crazy busy at work last week, I didn't get a chance to speak to the director until Friday. So, we did talk about a couple of things that I think we can add on maybe the next agenda, although I think they might be closed, agenda items.
Yes, but.
Am I correct? But, I mean, you know, uh, in terms of the, um, tourism part, I'm sure next meeting, the festival lights come up, it may be the chance to kind of be a report here. The other items, uh, one of the beyond, you know, the game, uh, another one that we have, maybe the enhancement game. There would be, clones, obviously, so. I'd say, probably.
Okay, fair enough.
Yep.
Uh, recreation, we've got Council Dearing and Director Russell, and there's nothing to your fiscal, is it?
No, myself, Director Russell, that, and there, I mean, nothing for this week, it's kind of slower than, uh, you know, for recreation.
Okay, now we have the, uh, usual highlight of the night, if it works. Yeah, so, now, we can, Director Elms, I'm gonna turn it over to you guys now, and you can you can read through this, as you see fit.
Robert, I'll take.
You're sorry about.
Yes, I'll say about change orders here.
And I'm talking to this fellow just about every night, but.
Yeah. The white one, resume, I was talking to, so.
And they started using the high pitch voice.
Yeah. Uh, so the first one is, uh, a change order for Division One, and it's available with consultants, water street fee. Change order, contract, uh, of consulting services. So we orig, so, we originally, uh, entered into a agreement, uh, with consultants for a hundred and twenty-one thousand. My council for the change orders, one, two, and three, so add up, for the water street, is now a hundred and fifty-four thousand. So we did have, uh, this change order number four, Division One coming. And it's because of the contract we've approved. And the, I'm trying to, explaining it to you now. From the building side, the construction contract, like, there's been six change orders. Those six change orders added up to fifty-two days. And so during, as the change order comes in, it's fourteen days, and we get, and it's, it's there, it's changed. So because we had approved six change orders at the time, uh, there was another item, this one was, uh, an additional twenty days, maybe, in this contract. Which brought it up to fifty-two working days on the construction contract. Uh, so we had twenty days, less than twenty, ten hour days for inspector. Two hundred hours, thirty dollars in our, we're gonna charge. Uh, so this change order was, uh, this is the amount of thirty-two thousand, fourteen dollars, and forty percent, just to be included. Uh, and this covers our inspection contract registration time from the Friday, this is September seventh. I think it's right near the end of that, you know, July, or September, or September sixth, or September ninth, or something like that. Uh, so the new report contract value, uh, with the improvement, this would bring that, uh, getting this, uh, contract to a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, we're probably just.
Question, is this, uh, very valid, valid?
Yes.
Somebody, somebody is there in the house for it. Questions, anyone for background?
We shall let, let turn to the council. Is our policy considered that, correct?
Okay. You want? All right. Next change order, second one, a street phase one.
Now, this is a different one, so this is change order set up to the construction contract, this is for my contract. Uh, so I've received the change order set up, and it's regarding another twenty days. No cost of the, the, no cost of the, their contract, their contract is not going on, just they, they're looking for twenty, additional days. Say, to be changed or what? As, you know, as the government told myself and the CEO, and my own here, tell us, you've always approved this, they were there, took in a hundred bill. You approve that, then there's gonna come a cost for, for those twenty days, it was an inspector, and, and inspector, and so if we approve this, twenty days, uh, there will be another change order coming, we need to make the twenty days for inspector, of course, the other. I did go through it, uh, you know, uh, a little bit more detail now, and, and some of the items. Uh, as you all know, we've, uh, landed two years, and, uh, like you said, there are a lot of items in there, I don't think were are really valid, and there was time in there. As part of the contract, just so you know, uh, the contract, they're supposed to verify every underground service lab, with the, the inspector. Uh, we, we, we saw every current stuff, so there's nowhere to, or just those, they're supposed to verify that, so. And in, in this, there's a couple of, looking for additional days created. We didn't know that service there, that actually, we didn't know that service there. Uh, it's also their responsibility, even though we allow them to close the road, still, we can change that in time, and it shouldn't be cost, they had him for a day and a half, additional day, to open up the road, for, uh, one of our events, whether it's Canada Day, or, or Hanley Days. Uh, so there's a few items in there, I don't, I don't think it's fair for the town, I don't think the taxpayers should pay for it. It's unfair that, uh, that, to put them in this position, because what will happen now is, uh, the consultants will have to go after the contractor to get paid for the inspector. So right now, the inspector's not, who's paying the inspector? Normally it's us, but it's usually based on working hours, so the original contract had a hundred and twenty-five working days, that's ten hours a day. We also approved an additional fifty-two days, uh, so that's another five hundred and twenty hours. I, I feel more, we, there was enough time allocated, that the project could have been a little quicker, there was multiple days there, when there was maybe not as much activity, or as probably less people that could have been there. Uh, and I, once again, it's your decision, but I would advise council not to sign the, the additional days.
Okay, I'll just throw it out to anyone for a question or a comment?
I could have missed it, Sean, was there any reason why they said it did go, take an, an additional two days?
Did, uh, did all that, but.
Yeah, so I.
And I speak.
It landed all, but Sean, Sean says it doesn't make sense, does it?
Yeah, so, for example, the, the inspectors, it actually worked all days. Do inspector work? Correct. So, but I, when I was reading it at first, I just mixed up some lines in change orders for the contractor versus the consultant. So, the work was actually, the consultant was actually on site. Absolutely.
But the reason that we would recommend that be denied, is that technically, we did, the minute we say yes, we're on the hook for a fine decades fee. This way, by the denier, that's between the consultant and the contractor. Contractor's responsibility is to pay the consultant, not the town.
Yeah.
The minute we take responsibility and accept the change order on behalf of the consulting fee, that kind of clears him from having to pay for the contractor. So that's why we would recommend that.
Good?
Yeah, that explains it well.
Okay, so, as long as Director Elms has sound grounds for it, then, here it is. All right, uh, next one, uh, capital expenditure, Agathon Land Drafting and Consulting Company, Water Street Phase One.
Does you still want me to do this one, Perry, or?
Give her.
Uh, so this one is just the approval to, uh, for council pay invoice number sixteen twenty-two from Agathon Drafting for Water Street Phase One. Uh, it's part of the status report thirteen, and it's work from, uh, May fifth to June sixth, and the amount invoiced is twenty-six thousand. Uh, one hundred and ninety-six. Uh, it's fifty-fifty car share, uh, monies are deposited in our bank, and the town's cars, total of, uh, eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That number doesn't look fifty-fifty, just because H S T comes after the reasonable amount, and we get that back later on.
Okay.
Right?
So, this, this is very straightforward, so unless someone's got a question for Director Elms, then we can move on.
Well, I'm your invoice. This is vehicle mileage, you got seven thousand, what's that, seven thousand what? Kilometers? Do you go, do you come from B C, or?
Dear, dear inspector, drives from the central.
Do you know the numbers now?
Seven thousand?
Yeah.
Number two.
Yeah.
Number two, all right.
Yeah.
You're doing those things, right?
I didn't go to central, actually.
Two in return, or what?
No, I'd say two in, come out, but.
I say, I say.
That's, that's, that's a town, that's, it's really.
And it's like over, it's over a month, so I mean, that would be.
Yeah, fair enough, okay. So we move on to Water Street Phase Two, capital expenditure.
So this, uh, project is for Phase Two, uh, and it's, we're just looking for approval, required for invoice twenty twenty-three, eight thousand, and it's for W S P, E I, Canada. Status report number two. Uh, and the total, uh, cost, or the invoice is twelve thousand, four hundred and fifty-five H S T included. Uh, our cost, our town share is sixty-eight hundred and seven dollars, seventy-three cents.
Same, yes, it's straightforward information purposes, unless someone's got a question?
Now, what's the status of that we have the federation?
So, uh, transportation work sent back, some issues, uh, and, and dealing with the intersection up on the highway where they're joining in. Uh, all that to be redone, as we speak. That's something to do with the thickness, they never had it noted on the paper, that it was twenty fifteen mils, they just had it say, then they didn't pay. So they just had that breaked around, to say, uh, payment there, so once we get that over there, then we'll say, we're ready to tender. That's all.
So, for Water Street Phase Two?
Water Street, yes, sir.
What's the timeline?
It's, we, yeah, so we, if we tender now, as you can tell, this contractor, they can, they can work. If we can get this tendered, I think we'll be quite necessary, as soon, and just like, shares town this year, as soon as the weather's good to go, I think contractors will start.
So, so you're optimistic? So, so you're optimistic this will be tendered, very soon?
Yes.
Okay, for spring start?
Yeah, absolutely.
We all good? Okay, next up, lower rental?
Can I ask a question on that we're going to try to get this stuff out and figure out print? No, not that, I'm sorry. Yeah, anyway, the lower that we were approved. I thought first we talked about was three months. Anyway. Uh, as you can see, the, the bids, look for four, uh, look, look for lower for four months. Look for bids, it was only one company came through, I don't know if I'm allowed to say the company or not, but you see the price there. Is that the same we paid last year? Or was it a bit more?
It's a, it's about, um, fifteen hundred dollars probably more.
Yeah, that's still more. Don't even, don't even, my concern was, we were going to run into what we did last year, where they sent us out a dinkie.
The second bidder is, had the same one as last year, that's why they never sent it.
The boys were really, really pleased with that one, so.
So it's the exact, exact same one. Yes, sir.
Sean, who, who did we get off last year?
Same company. For your better caster, we could, we were in the public need and it's public expenditure, we could, we'd say.
The name of the company, you mean?
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, brands, is that the way you pronounce that one brand? Uh, it's other fellow's number, they, well, I can't say the names of other fellow, I figured they were the, I thought that's who we got her from last time, it's the, uh, you know, different, different name.
No, the smaller ones.
What?
Yeah, the smaller ones from the other company.
Yeah, she was. She was too, too small. Anyway, I'm just wondering, of course, we can discuss that after the four months, we need four months or three months?
December.
Well, we, we tried to be.
For four, but we didn't get to January.
Yeah, we never got, but last year in January was, that's when we started to get the ice and stuff, so we wanted, I thought it'd be, we started. We thought winter months from December to March, that way we're totally. Covered if something.
Pretty much the same pressure I had last year for three months.
Yep.
And if we got her, we can use for ending it.
Absolutely, she comes with, well, they come with the blade and tire, but a bucket will come with it as well, so a bit of a load solved and all that stuff.
Okay, sounds good. We're good, everyone?
Yes, sir.
Alright, next up, we have Eastern Regional Service Board Waste Management, service fees.
Yeah, Sean, you go over that part, buddy.
This is, uh, playing, this is just an update from them that their fee is not going up. Uh, you should see the attached letter there. Uh, rates are staying the same, it's twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five per household, which includes a bulk collection that is not, like, uh. We can't take it to, 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 uh, the, uh, priority package. Uh, I guess there was issues before, if you read, uh, in the letter that, uh, there was some controversy, so they allowed several bulks. This year, no, two twenty-five is what you get, and you get one bulk.
That, that's fine, but they've got to be prepared to do the bulk cleanup right down the year.
Correct.
Anyway.
People expect it in the spring.
Yes, so.
But we should set that date well in advance.
I, I kind of figured that's where the discussion was going to go. So, bulk cleanup, maybe we should have that discussion very quickly. Uh, and thoughts on when it should take place? And I think consensus is spring. Everyone agree on that?
Well, I can, if, I can send an email, you know. I think what we do, we do let, with a dress of professional letter.
Yeah.
Uh, sent it in that, here, where we've done it for twenty years. And, uh, just give them the date and hopefully they get something very close.
And I think we've got, we've got to, you know, get clearance to residents that in twenty-twenty-six, the town will not be doing a bulk cleanup, is that correct?
Well, basically this is right, we'll be doing it, right? We vote, the town itself.
Here will be one. Eastern Regional Service Board, the process for that will be clearly, whoever on the timeframe, process, everything.
You said it goes to the spring, correct?
Yeah. Yep.
Ableish?
That may be work, work, well, we spend a little extra on the awareness campaign, but maybe acquire in post office, the offices. That may be one of the ones that's worth, uh, to, uh, to do. Make sure it's out there.
I mean, that can work perfect, people, you put it out when you're ready and they'll come take it when you're ready, because I don't know what to beef in people, then you've got to make your point. If that's all, that's a big mouthful there.
Okay, good. Remembrance theme crosswalk location, so.
Yep. Well, we dipped this, I think we dipped this, it was going to be scattered in the spot that, that it shouldn't be. You can't just take, no matter what it is, with, with remembers day theme, you can't just take it, you can put it anywhere, make a crosswalk. Uh, me personally, I'd like to see one or two of them. I think, I think they look great, that it's a good, uh, good respect, great respect. I think they should be able to, one of our, on our road, not on the highways, because I don't want them to go, they, uh, they're, they're upset there. But at one of our main intersections, like, you know, up by the jungle or here by the pond like. Somewhere like that.
The pond like, right next to Legion.
Yeah, you could do, I mean, we could do a couple there, because you, they have to go across the road, you know, something like that. But don't even, now we're running out of time, are we still capable of getting that done now?
As soon as we get a dry day, we got, we got, and we got, we're always ready.
I, I see, I, I agree with, I mean, you're saying, I see there was a suggestion, the mistake about the library, was there rationale for that?
That when I was talking to the president, uh, that's all he, he would have liked it, after the general coming to him a few minutes ago. Uh, you know, the track, where does it exist, this is our one, right? And then his suggestion was up by the library, you know, what, you know, what, that's just.
And I would assume it's just a crosswalk here.
Yeah, just this crosswalk, the, the, right there in this intersection.
That's a busy.
Right?
I, I would have thought it would be more appropriate to put it down on, on the, right next to Legion, the intersection there.
I thought the same thing as, as you.
It's a busy intersection as well, it's also, as somebody else noted, close to the Legion.
So I asked, was there any specific reason why you suggested, or just the fact that they thought it was busy?
No idea why he suggested.
What about the area of the Senate Town? There is an intersection here, I don't know if it, uh, but we should have more crosswalks, have more intersections, and all that stuff.
Well, I guess, like you said, in our operating budget next year, we'll be able to, like you said, to get someone to do this, they were going to charge us over two thousand dollars to do one. We'll get a lot cheaper than that ourselves, but going forward, we can, based on council very well, we can put one to, I do know C V S, for example, has only one right now. I don't know if they'll put anymore, but, uh.
Where, where, where's this located?
Right across from the town.
Okay.
Or in the vicinity there, river.
Just right next to where the.
Yeah, right next to the, the Manuel River.
So what's the thoughts here? Do we want this on Water Street, close to Legion, or are we okay with putting it up there?
I, I like the idea of close to Legion.
I like that.
But I'll go with consensus.
I, I was thinking where the sidewalks were, uh, changing. So on one side they're older, on the right end, then they changed to the left.
Bishop Road.
Yes, I thought.
We need one there too.
Just, that'll be something there, so I thought that'd be a great location for it. Well, I've done.
Anyone else? Anything close to Legion?
Yeah, I like, I like, yeah, I'm, I'm Water Street, not on the pond like, I'm Water Street.
So from Marina Place across the.
Yeah, and, and, and remember today, when they, when they beat the Senate, they march back to Legion, they will cross over that.
They don't do marching.
Depends on the weather.
Uh, last couple of years, they're just, because of the age, it's a legionary, they just.
They will cross over and also get the.
Well, they'll cross over at home point, yeah.
But they haven't been prayed in a couple of years now.
Oh, we, we kind of lost it, we were looking for one here, right, on the road, over there, right, about a door. Yeah, someone else.
Yeah, I think we were looking at putting it where a crosswalk would be, where, natural crosswalk. Okay, so we've got consensus, we're going to put it on Water Street, and what I'm hearing is, better put it down by Bishop Road, where the sidewalk switches from one side to the other.
Did we get that problem solved?
We got a couple of old places to do, actually.
Yeah, we should build them for November eleventh, Sean, if we can.
That'd be a nice, that'd be real.
Although, next, next Friday, as soon as I get a location, I'll, I'll talk to, uh, I'll see what.
I think we've got consensus on location, gentlemen?
I'm good, I'm good with Bishop Road.
So just again, where, where a sidewalk stops.
Yeah.
Switch over from.
That's perfect.
To Water Street. It's not bad, it's in between Legion and Senate Town.
Where you go, pull up?
Water Street. I think that's the direction we.
To the, to the west of Bishop Road.
Yes.
Yes, so this, sidewalk comes up on one side, they change it, not the other.
So we also need one, not necessarily Legion one, but we could, we also need one up on the other end, where it crosses back. No, it's not the one.
Self prospecting. The one auto is the other.
They're professional, are you?
Okay, so I was just going to let you know that the last connection that we were through for the minutes. Uh, we had a surge and the last was for pay.
Oh, surge?
The internet.
He was still live? He's still live?
He's still live.
Oh, it is still live?
But the computer won't land, won't update that. Doing sensitive.
So I can see the action of it, twelve forty-five, uh, seventy forty-five.
Okay, technical business is solid, can you? Okay, we'll move on then.
Okay.
Fifty-seven crossroad, new driveway access.
Do you Sean, do you like to take that one?
Yeah, so that's just there on, uh, a cross corner, crossroad and Pipers. It's just, the lady got high back curbs, she just wants to remove the high back to create another entrance or another driveway, have some more parking. Uh, straightforward, myself and the director's squad has looked at it, uh, there's no issues. The only thing I would advise is, has it done like in on the side, or by country roads, or in that lady done it? I think it needs to be done by some sort of professional, not just, I wouldn't be able to do it, so I think the taxpayers, we put the curve in, they should have someone come and cut it properly.
I don't think you should say, I would advise that anywhere should be completed by, has to be completed by information. You don't make it an option.
Residents' faces.
Yes, and, and.
And that directs.
Don't, don't make it, uh, you know, ready or anything.
Alright, we've got another one? Any questions? Uh, water sewer insulation ending.
Yeah, that's something we, we talked about, because, uh, you know, we always used to have one, I don't know why it was ever, ever changed or stopped. But for a lot of reasons, especially the pavement, because it always seemed like we get the end of the stick when it comes to pavement, they're here, that we're the town, they finish it up in. Uh, and for danger now, this is the reason they used to do it years ago, if everything is set down, now this time of the year, you know, caves in, a quicker lull it, you know, in the ground. But you have to mitigate for us, we're going to destroy it, but it, it kind of comes to a date where you've got to say, okay, we've got to stop this. And we looked at, we were on top of what we discussed on October thirty-first. So we said, you know, November seventh. I mean, that gives, that gives everybody ten full months of deciding where they want to, when they want to do it. I know you can't do it in January, February, March. But it gives you lots of time to decide that you're going to put in a, a hookup. And we got to have it cut out, that's it.
So you're saying for this year, it's November the seventh, but as of twenty-twenty-six, it's probably October thirty-first?
And, and that's the start date. So like next year, for example, come October thirty-first, and this, to me, as, as everything changes, we're not black and white, but, but the goal would be not to dig until November first. Right, so we can completely shift to our operations and.
Yeah, because last, last year, I think we should just put a date in stick to it, that's it.
Yeah, the end, exactly, yeah.
Last year, fairness to our public works people, Jeff and me, they were up, had equipment on, and we had a bit of snow, and we were a bit of salt, and then they're trying to finish up. So the coach, like council mentioned. And it just takes it right off, taking equipment off.
Yeah, unless there's emergencies, no reason.
No.
Yeah, I, I agree, it should be a hard date.
Should, should we put in a hard date for start? No, for starting.
Oh, for starting, yeah, okay.
That way, makes it easier for.
People to plan.
Contractors to plan. They know that.
Start in the new year.
Like if, if, if we say, okay, we're not, April first, yeah, if April first is when we'll start, that's it.
I'm more concerned about, that would be the end date. Like I get the front date, because someone pays, all they can do, we're in the middle of something, is the end date, because I think what happened, it used to be in there, but then we, we got some warm falls. And when the sun ain't twenty degrees on November thirteenth, people are saying, okay, you know, well, let's put in the water service. But it don't take very long for the, the change under fourteenth and fifteenth to end.
Yeah, which is why you put it in a date, and you stick to it, and just keep, never you, you put it out, you look at, so everyone knows.
Yeah, so if we put that out next year, October thirty-first, no more digging after that, that, that's a, like, we're switching over. I, I like that idea, and, like you said.
I still think you should look at the start date. Yeah, there's a set timeframe, here's when we're going to put in water, so it's, it's, it's not, it's not a date, you got to wait.
And if we had that date, that start date, at the same time, we're saying what the end date, because we're also giving the start date.
Yeah, April first would be the earliest that I would, like, because March, we still, we still got there snowing, and even.
Put down for that, beginning, whether or pending.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you do, October thirty-first is firm.
To me, I would do October thirty-first, for I mean.
That's good.
You know, we got, we got the, not just paying, you got to get the ground, town will settle a little bit before they stop. What's going to happen to that to us last year? On the next road, that one that's steering out, nothing but a big salary. Big old salary.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, we're going on that one?
Thank you very much, council.
Central United Church Cemetery, chain link fence.
This is something I would deal with for the last eight or nine months. Uh, just because I was trying to arrange the quoting from the company in town when they wrote, dealing with this type of work, so we don't pay. It's like some other fences that we've repaired, they're, they're not new, they're not heavy-duty fences, but when you drive down that lane with a cemetery, it's a very clear, it's a result, snow clearing. Uh, I think the, I think the cost is good, uh, with some reinforcement, uh, new chain link, reinforcement of some posts around the gate. And, uh, same as a couple of fences we did last year, I told, uh, the church that if council wasn't decided, we wouldn't do it till the spring, because I sense for it now, before someone throws that again. Uh, and I also would recommend, if you approve it, that this is not a, a yearly occurrence, because that lane is so narrow, that it could be snowbound every year.
Are we repairing or replacing?
Repairing.
So there's no option, perhaps, shed a couple of feet to give a little bit more room to, so there's no, um.
Costs a lot more than that, though. Yeah, they have a lot of, yeah, hard to catch a tree for thousands of hours of labor.
That's why, uh, just make sure, let's chance happen and then.
But if they wanted to look at the option to cover those costs, we'd pay for interior or something, oh, right.
I think that, that fence has been, over many years, it hasn't, hasn't.
Hundred percent.
So, it's the first time I see it, Rob.
Yeah, it is.
It's actually hit that one pretty well, where that.
Oh, is it? Is there any other way we can do that, is, do we have, do we have a small mower, a sidewalk power, something to do with?
A small truck or something?
We can use.
Maybe it's a question using the machine or you have that road.
So you can make it up.
Yeah.
Uh, it's on there, right?
I'm up here once for this again.
Okay, good. Any further questions? Alright, snow clearing request, three eighty-seven A Water Street and nine A South Road, both streets.
Yeah, did you want to speak to this, uh, council board?
You're going up, you don't get answered, right?
Uh, so we got, uh, two letters from you, you can see in there, from two areas of town. Basically, the same type of road, your, your tree gravel, uh, names are column, one's thirty feet, uh, three hundred and eighty-seven A Water Street. Uh, it's four meters wide, roughly ninety meters long, the other is on five South Road, uh, same thing, four meters wide, seven meters long. The only thing, and both letters are just asking for council to look after snow clearing. Previously, the three eighty-seven Water Street asked us to take over the road, take over the road and, and maintain it, and council denied that. But now both of these letters are just asking for council's help in snow clearing. Uh, the only thing that, like, once you get in snow clearing, I just want the council to know that there may be gravel tore up, and you may then have to be looking at places in gravel. And you start replacing gravel, you know, maintaining the road, so, you know, I just wonder, you know, if, if you do take it over or do snow clear, that someone's got to be responsible for the stone. Whether it's also ordering one or whatever, right, but, uh.
Okay, anyone want to jump in on this?
Well, it sounds like in terms of the, the gravel, and I don't know about the width, but we could be into that, we could be improving the fix and replacing it, so if we take it off.
So, any further questions?
I mean, three eighty-seven, I think since I've been on council, it's about four times probably, that it have come up, and we've denied it every other time, I mean, but.
But they want us to take over the road?
They want us to take over the road, like. We've done stuff on other roads, uh, you know, if you reach some kind of agreement, where maybe if. if you reach some kind of agreement where maybe if, if gravel gets tore up in the winter, they got to fix it and if it's not fixed, we can't go back in there and play with it next year, but I don't know.
So.
I don't know.
In, in, during the last term, this was a extensive debate on this and we got into a whole discussion and we went back and we redrafted policy, if I'm not sure, for roads that would fall under non-conforming, which, but I think this is threat to homes, correct? And we laid out conditions where roads like this could give services if they met certain conditions. So I guess my question to you is, were they analyzed under the policy? Because that's your starting point.
Yeah.
You have to look at policy.
I can take them back and get the non-conforming roads and comparable clean zone and.
Because if they meet the policy.
Then it's there.
Then you have no choice but to obfuscate some of it. So I think that's the first point we need to look at.
Good.
I'll work the mayor on that. We had a lengthy discussion in the past.
Well, I can speak, any decision you make, then based on policy.
Absolutely. So I will take that and that's going to make life a lot easier for everyone.
That's why we did spend a lot of time making a non-conforming road policy, make it a lot easier.
So you'll give us not being on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, with more of the wording in that again, because again, they're not asking to take over road.
No, we, we probably will get that ready for Tuesday, Sean. If we can, we can, but more likely, we'll actually probably just action and put it on the first, we'll maybe, yeah.
Okay, Counselor's Items, report for SAM, information purposes, and this is from Counselor Deering.
Yeah, I just sent that along, that's something that we had a meeting this morning in Harbor Grace and everybody had to give a little report of what we did since the last SAM AGM in